Given us the daily blessings that we receive. We give thanks for the opportunity to live in a free country where we can make our own decisions. We ask your blessings on this council and your guidance over the decisions that we make. We ask you to watch over our servicemen and women as they protect our freedom and our safety forces as they protect our city, for this we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. Roll call.
Henry?
Here.
Johnson?
Here.
Kelly?
Here.
Tomorrow?
Here.
Paul?
Here.
April?
Here.
Ethel?
Here.
Mr. President?
Here. Any room to hear? I need approval of minutes of August twentieth, two thousand twelve. So move. Motion a second, all favor say aye.
Aye.
But minutes have been approved. Election appointments are none. Special orders and committees, Mayor Johnson?
Mr. President, thank you. Um, as most of you here on council, I make a point to try to recognize residents of Keith or past residents of Keith who are in our military, particularly those who are serving overseas and have participated once or twice in welcoming service members home who have been serving towards the duty overseas. You may recently have seen in the paper a two thousand four Keith High School graduate by the name of Cody Rice. Cody was serving in Afghanistan and was wounded in an incident that necessitated him to be evacuated from the area and to have an amputation where he is currently at Walter Reed Hospital recovering from that procedure. I felt it would be a very small token of my appreciation for his sacrifice and for the appreciation that I know that all of us have for his sacrifice to have a proclamation for him this evening. And his mother Gina Kyan is with us today, so Gina, if you'd like to join, you can go out front. I'll go ahead and read the proclamation. Whereas it is one of the responsibilities of the mayor of the city of Keith, Ohio, to recognize occasions and people of outstanding significance. Whereas military duty is one of the most giving and noble acts of service any American provides to our great country. Whereas Cody Rice, a two thousand four Keith High School graduate enlisted in the United States Army in April of two thousand eight and graduated from basic training in December of that year. Whereas Cody Rice worked diligently to earn the title of sergeant during his service in the military. Whereas while serving our country during his second tour in Afghanistan, Sergeant Rice was severely injured by a grenade attack. After applying his own tourniquet, he was transported and underwent amputation surgery at Walter Reed National Military Medical Center in Bethesda, Maryland with success. Whereas throughout this difficult time with the support of family and friends, Sergeant Rice's patriotic spirit remains strong and is on the road to recovery. And therefore, I, Mark D. Johns, mayor of the city of Keith, Ohio, do hereby present this proclamation to Sergeant Cody Rice, United States Army, on behalf of all the citizens of Keith, as a heartfelt thank you for your sacrifice and service to our country.
Um, it's my understanding that Sergeant Rice intends to stay in the military after he recovers, is that correct?
Yeah, he doesn't leave. I mean, I don't know if he's going to remain active. Um, you know, he'll be given that decision if he... They said the average rehab is about nine months. Um, they said that he's charged full court ahead in April six, so he really wants to get back to going to do what's... That's going to be Afghanistan again, pretty god, doesn't it? But, I mean, staying in is a good thing for him. He's up for promotion again, too. He's going to get in that hospital and stuff.
Excellent.
About four years in the time limit, and he loves her.
Yeah, absolutely. Well, if you would, please, um, send this off to him at Walter Reed. Let him know that all of us back here in Keith, I think, and I'll be thanking him very much for his service to the country and also the sacrifice that he made for all of us. Thank you. Thank you. Mr. President, thank you. Let me finish business, there's none. Positions and communications.
It's from L.L.C. by a traditional liquor company, writing a new liquor license for Florida, LLC, TBA, Akos Kapos, seven ninety-three, this week, he filed for three hundred five six.
Mr. President, Mr. Craver?
Make the motion, we waive the hearing for four and a half, L.L.C., we need to talk there.
Second. Make a motion a second, all favor say aye.
Aye.
President, here.
Yeah, make a motion, see the file.
Thank you. Make a motion a second, we see them file. Positions and communications, all favor say aye.
Aye.
File is... Uh, visitors, now's the time for visitors to speak. If you'd like to speak, come up to the podium, state the name and address, tell us your concern. See, no? Congratulations. Committee report, right into the budget, Mr. Craver.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have no legislative requests this evening. Other items, city's property vehicle and liability insurance renewals received and accepted last week. The annual premium will be two thousand six hundred eleven dollars. The auditor's office is awaiting one additional care needed. Recovery has been available September first. And, uh, Audrey Alexander, any other items?
I just want to welcome our newest member to our HACX office, who really likes to start the day, and we're very happy to have her. Thank you.
Thank you. Public services, Mr. Martin?
Thank you, Mr. President. Public service was called to order on Monday, August twenty-seventh. Water department, Mr. Geller gave an update on the Franklin Avenue water line and pump station. Building had footers, foundation and walls construction for the pump station to begin August twenty-eighth. The water line to start September seventeenth. Contract calls for completion in six months. That should be in March, looking at springtime. Future plans include demolition of clarifiers one and two, and the building of a new clarifier equal in size to number one and two combined. The old clarifiers were installed in nineteen fifty-seven to nineteen sixty-nine. Improvements to the chlorine feed equipment and delivery. The cleaning of well five was discussed. Mr. Geller then discussed the engineer's estimate. Before the cuts, the amount was one billion eight hundred seventy-five thousand dollars. After the cuts, the estimate was one hundred fifty, uh, one million five hundred thirty-nine thousand. The budget of amount was one million five hundred thousand. Hopefully, the bids will come in under the estimate. Well five is thirty years old, the average life of the unit, thirty years. The EPA training was held at the Heath Water Plant. It was a busy day, but it went well. Wastewater, the ship date of the air headers is September seventeenth. Pumps are scheduled for September twenty-fourth. Possible problems with sewer lines behind the boat staff. Anything else, Mr. Geller?
I just have a couple anniversary dates to add. Your report was very good. Dave Rutter, twenty-two years, and Jack Brown, eleven years. That's all I have, thank you.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Mr. President. Thank you. Public safety, Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. President. Public safety will be Monday, September seventeenth at five thirty P.M. Chief, uh, I'm...
Um, just one member celebrating Dave Love's sixty-sixth year with seventy feet. That's all I have right now, thank you.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Mr. President. Thank you. Public safety?
Thank you, Mr. President. Public safety will be Monday, September seventeenth at five thirty P.M. Chief, uh, I'm...
Um, just one member celebrating Dave Love's sixty-sixth year with seventy feet. That's all I have right now, thank you.
Chief, uh, Lieutenant Mason? Yeah?
I'd like to recognize a few, uh, police park employees, Mike Banks, seven years service, June Prozier, four years of service, and Jason Black, four years of service. Also like to remind everybody the state like texting ban, lots of effect. And, uh, also that means anyone over eighteen cannot use a cellphone at all until they are parked in out of the road later. Officers are also working the school zones now, the school sessions. Keep that in mind as you travel. Thank you.
Thank you.
Streets and drainage?
Mr. Happy?
Streets and drainage, thank you, Mr. President. Streets and drainage will meet September seventeenth at five thirty P.M. Bob, you have anything?
Uh, yeah, a couple anniversaries also. Tim Swingle, been here fourteen years, Dana Snyder, eleven.
Thank you. Community Development Zone?
Uh, the community development zone met tonight at five thirty, and, uh, we've got seven items. Uh, we moved number six up there. First one is bridges, we actually have work, and, uh, bridges, the large ones, and large culverts, and are in good condition. The back foot trail covered, the cycling should go down. Uh, they need placed within five years, it's steel covered. And, uh, the Liberty Drive Bridge, it needs to be rehanded in five to seven years. And, uh, there was a lot on the Thornwood Drive in the pavement cover. I'd like, John, if you would, to give us a rundown on that.
The, uh, culvert was actually scheduled to be done this fall, but we had a delay because there was an air raid when the acquisition company was doing some documentation, so we threw the project into next year. Uh, but that's not all bad, because what we're going to do is combine the Thornwood Drive project, the raid project, so we probably should see some better pricing as a result of that. We expect that to come sometime next summer.
Thank you, sir. And, uh, Oakwell Drive Bridge, Eddie gave a good report on that. He said there, the, uh, the humps that you encounter when you cross it, it's due to a, uh, design flaw in the box being, uh, gives you too much camber causing humps and grits. But ODOT has, uh, come up with something to fill the, uh, you know, grind the eye content in, and overlay the application to the surface, and, uh, he said this should be completed in the near future, and it shouldn't cause any roadway closures.
That's correct.
Okay. And, uh, Oakwell Drive, making project, we discussed that, and, uh, let's see, we moved some of the projects around to accomplices, and, uh...
Is there anything else on that?
Yeah, what we did is, um, to get more money for the Thornwood Drive, Fred Payton project, a more several dollars, we took the Oakwell Drive project, we took money from that and put it into the Thornwood Drive project, pushed the Oakwell Drive project back to you so it could be fully funded in a later year. So we just did some financial maneuvering to get more money for the project.
Yeah, one thing I found out, when you take your notes, sometimes you can't read them. But, uh, I appreciate John coming up. Speaking of seventy-nine update, most of the painting is complete or it is complete at them, and, uh, contracts are going to begin, we'll have to look at the low spots and correct in, uh, some of it, and all those of it, and, uh, and they'll have the, uh, landscaping be finished here for soon, and, uh, it all should be complete through October, right?
That's right.
And, uh, Dan Evers, Mr. Dan Evers, Lieutenant Chamberlain, tell us, again, what I have on, uh, project.
Thank you. Thank you. Parks and Recreation, David Shea? Mr. Cole?
Thank you, Mr. President. Parks Recreation and David Shea will meet September seventeenth, immediately following Streets and Drainage. Thank you, Mr. President.
Planning Commission? Mr. Craver?
Mr. President, Planning Commission met on August twenty-third at seven P.M. One item, they reviewed new architectural changes for the existing Matthews Ford Building. Uh, Commission came back and requested additional information prior to making a decision. Mr. Groff, any other items?
No, thank you. Thank you. All right, it's all committee reports, brings us to the introduction of ordinances. Order sixty-two, two thousand twelve.
Order sixty-two, two thousand twelve, the order is authorized in appropriation of two thousand dollars to the general fund, these periods of supplies, such as office supplies, for police department.
Order sixty-two, two thousand twelve, we have a second reading. Order sixty-three, two thousand twelve.
Order sixty-three, two thousand twelve, the order is authorizing appropriation of one thousand dollars to the general fund, general administration, materials and supplies, such as office supplies, the municipal building, main office.
Order sixty-three, two thousand twelve, we have a second reading. Order sixty-four, two thousand twelve.
Order sixty-four, two thousand twelve, the order is authorizing corporate grant, which prepares new joint application to the OPWC for a grant to accept third-hand street reporting proposals submitted.
Mr. President?
Mr. Gennery?
I make the motion that we waive the second reading with order sixty-four, two thousand twelve.
Second?
Make a motion a second, wait, roll call.
Henry?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Tomorrow?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
April?
Yes.
Ethel?
Yes.
Ethel?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
April?
Yes.
Ethel?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Ethel?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
April?
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 Yes.
Mr. President?
Mr. Gennery?
I make the motion that we adopt order sixty-four, two thousand twelve.
Second?
Make a motion a second, for deduction of sixty-four, two thousand twelve. Any discussion? Mr. President? Mr. Mayor?
Appreciate the council's waiving second reading on ordinance assistance door, but also make the same request for ordinance sixty-five as they are both related. Mr. Groff, would you provide a brief, wide explanation as to the necessity of the second reading we waived?
The village of Bramble is going to apply for Ohio Public Works funding on the average Bramble tour and keep on this particular program, and the submittal name is early act program, so we need to, um, these have to be included in the plan submittal, the application for Bramble. So, um, that's why we're doing this work this month.
Thank you. Any other discussion? No, roll call.
Henry?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Tomorrow?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
April?
Yes.
April?
Yes.
Ethel?
Yes.
Ethel?
Yes.
Order sixty-four, two thousand twelve.
Order sixty-five, two thousand twelve, the order is authorizing director of the mayor to change, cooperate, bring in newer to find open the funding, the portions of South Thirtieth Street was Main Street and more Bramble Road, according to proposals submitted.
Mr. President? Mr. Gennery?
Make the motion that we waive ordinance, waive the second reading with order sixty-five, two thousand twelve.
Second?
Make a motion a second, roll call.
Henry?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Tomorrow?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
April?
Yes.
Ethel?
Yes.
Ethel?
Yes.
Ethel?
Yes.
Ethel?
Yes.
Make the motion for deduction.
Mr. President?
Mr. Gennery? I make the motion that we adopt ordinance sixty-five, two thousand twelve.
Second?
Make a motion a second, any discussion? No, roll call?
Henry?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Tomorrow?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
April?
Yes.
April?
Yes.
Ethel?
Yes.
Ethel?
Yes.
Order sixty-five, two thousand twelve.
Order sixty-seven, two thousand twelve.
Order sixty-seven, two thousand twelve, the order is authorizing the city of Newark to prepare and submit an application to the Ohio Attorney General's Office, which is speaking from Ohio Forward Demission Grant Program, according to proposals submitted.
Mr. President? Mr. Gennery?
I make the motion that we waive the second reading with order sixty-seven, two thousand twelve.
Second?
Make a motion a second, wait, roll call?
Henry?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Tomorrow?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
April?
Yes.
April?
Yes.
Ethel?
Yes.
Ethel?
Yes.
Ethel?
Yes.
Ethel?[1258.15] Yes.
Tomorrow.
Yes.
School.
Yes.
Free will.
Yes.
Captain.
Yes.
Order sixty-seven, two thousand twelve.
Second.
Have a motion in a second, uh, any discussion? Uh, will call.
Henry.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Kelly.
Yes.
Tomorrow.
Yes.
School.
Yes.
Free will.
Yes.
Before we go on to, uh, introduction of orders, or, orders on second reading, just for clarification for the audience members, Order sixty-six, two thousand twelve was pulled, because, you know, nobody is right, John, or?
That's correct.
You want to discuss any further, or, I mean, there's?
The Ohio Public Works Commission provides grants to all the communities in the county, all over the state. City of Pete has been, um, receiving out of those grants each year for the best part of six years. And, um, we've gotten grants from a lot of other communities, haven't we? And quite frankly, it's the year to, it's the other community's turn to get these grants. And so there's no sense specifying, because the writing's on the wall, we're actively, and that's, it's a fair thing.
Thank you, John, good. Okay, Order sixty-second, second reading, Order fifty-seven, two thousand twelve.
Order fifty-seven, two thousand twelve, the order is establishing capital projects fund, for the Oakwell Drive Bridge Rehabilitation Fund, authorizing the appropriation of one million one thousand, forming the fifty-seven dollars, forty-seven cents, for the Oakwell Drive Bridge Rehabilitation Fund of County. For OPW C funds and federal funds expanded by ODOT, for Oakwell Drive Bridge Rehabilitation Project.
Mr. President, Mr. Henry.
Uh, I move that we adopt Order fifty-seven, two thousand twelve.
Have a motion in a second, any discussion? No, will call.
Henry.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Kelly.
Yes.
Tomorrow.
Yes.
School.
Yes.
Free will.
Yes.
Captain.
Yes.
Order fifty-eight, two thousand twelve.
Order fifty-eight, two thousand twelve, the order is authorizing appropriation of sixty thousand dollars for the general public service services. Also authorizing direct to the city of Newark advantage, with the Ohio Old Dimension Program, to reflect evolution policy.
Mr. President.
Mr. Henry.
Make a motion that we adopt Order fifty-eight, two thousand twelve. Second, have a motion in a second, any discussion? No, will call.
Henry.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Kelly.
Yes.
Tomorrow.
Yes.
School.
Yes.
Free will.
Yes.
Captain.
Order sixty-nine, two thousand twelve.
Order sixty-nine, two thousand twelve, the order is authorizing appropriation of fifteen thousand dollars for the general fund, ten thousand, zoning services, and five thousand service services received for product reimbursement.
Mr. President.
Mr. Henry. Make a motion that we adopt Order sixty-nine, two thousand twelve.
Second.
Have a motion in a second, any discussion? No, will call.
Henry.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Kelly.
Yes.
Tomorrow.
Yes.
School.
Yes.
Free will.
Yes.
Order sixty, two thousand twelve.
Order sixty, two thousand twelve, the order is accepting and approving the dedication of the right wing, of the county main society, according to attached plan.
Mr. President.
Mr. Henry. I make a motion that we adopt Order sixty, dash two thousand twelve.
Second.
Have a motion in a second, any discussion? Will call.
Henry.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Kelly.
Yes.
Tomorrow.
Yes.
School.
Yes.
Free will.
Yes.
Order sixty-one, two thousand twelve.
Order sixty-one, two thousand twelve, the order is authorizing direct to the American, execute an amendment to the currently operative, operative negotiating agreement between local thirty-four, thirty-nine, and Maxine, Ohio State, AFL, C I M, and the City of Pete, according to proposals submitted.
Brother, Mr. Crabb. Move to adopt Order sixty-one, two thousand twelve. Second, have a motion in a second, any discussion? No, will call.
Henry.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Kelly.
Yes.
Tomorrow.
Yes.
School.
Yes.
Free will.
Yes.
Captain.
Yes.
Okay, resolutions on first reading, resolution two thousand twelve, dash ten.
Resolution two thousand twelve, ten, and resolution seventy-eight, mountain, but that's determined by the commission, and all the necessary tax levies, certify them to the county auditor.
Resolution two thousand twelve, dash ten, we have a second reading. If there are no resolutions on second reading, brings us to reports of city officials, there you go.
Thank you, Mr. President, I want to welcome everyone in attendance, again in particular, spending, appreciate you coming, and, uh, certainly if there's anything else that, uh, that we can do, um, to help, what I acknowledge, Cody's, uh, service and sacrifice, please don't hesitate to ask, we, we, we'd like to do that. Um, I know that proclamation is just, uh, a small thing relative to what he's done for us, but I hope he'll appreciate it. Um, also want to take a second to, uh, recognize Sue Brown mine, starting in the tax department. I'm sure she's going to do a fine job, and I'm sure she'll get, uh, excellent training from, uh, Kim and staff that have, in the tax department currently. I wanted to, uh, share with all of you a letter that, uh, that I received, uh, and that the fire department, the chief hut was received, from Marlene Jacob, who lives at one thirteen Emeco Avenue in Newark. Hold this up here, everybody can kind of see what's on it there. Says, "Dear Chief, I am writing this letter to express my gratitude and thankfulness to the two firefighters working last Friday evening, August seventeenth. At about six P M, my twenty-month-old granddaughter, granddaughter Lily, placed a child's toilet ring on her head and slipped it down around her neck. When I attempted to remove the ring, I was not able to pull it back over her head. My granddaughter was frightened and not cooperative. I drove to the heat station two, located on Lynnville, and was met in the parking lot by two firefighters. They were immediately attentive to the situation and also tried to remove the ring. They were not successful either, and my granddaughter once again became frightened and fearful. The officers took Lily into their fire truck bag. One sat down in a chair and held and soothed Lily, talking to her very reassuringly. She immediately settled down and began to cooperate. The other officer worked to cut through the ring so they could remove it. The cutting officer was very gentle, and after trying tools that were the least invasive, he was able to cut through the ring. All through the process, the officers were calming Lily, praising her, and reassuring her that she would be okay. Process of cutting through the seat and foam padding took about twenty minutes. Firemen were extremely careful to protect Lily's neck during the process, and worked slowly and methodically to minimize her emotional trauma. When I tell the story to family and friends, they laugh, and asked, the firemen laughed. The whole incident did have a humorous element, and after I knew Ellie was safe, I found myself smiling as well. I hope the officers experienced a bit of lev- a bit of levity when we left. I want to say how pleased, uh, pleased I was with the kind and gentle manner the firefighters dealt with my granddaughter. I am also grateful for the extra effort they put into the removal process that kept Lily safe and calm. So often our first responders are under the gun of public criticism for a myriad of complaints. I want to assure everyone, these men in particular, and the heat fire department, that I am a citizen who will spread a positive message about the service Lily and I receive. I regret I cannot recall the names of these two gentlemen, but I hope you will share this with them and the others in your department, as a very sincere thank you for a job well done. Sincerely, Marlene Jacob. P.S., if we had recorded the incident, I think we could have qualified for funniest home video. That thought on the surface after Lily was safe and the infamous toilet ring was carefully tucked away into her mother's memory chest. The pretty pink hat is complete with the title princess, will be a memento of one of Lily's infamous actions in her toddler years. Heaven, help us all. Thank you again. Chief, if you would, make sure you share that letter with the entire department.
That would be funny, Eric.
Yep. And, uh, finally, I want to mention that, uh, this past Saturday, uh, my Ohio University Bobcats, uh, went to State College, Pennsylvania, and, uh, achieved what was perhaps, uh, the biggest victory in the history of their football program on a stage that, uh, where much of the entire country, uh, was watching for, uh, circumstances that had taken place, uh, at Penn State. But, uh, I can assure you that on Sunday, and even yesterday, my voice was nowhere near as strong as it is right now. Um, I, uh, am glad, uh, that, uh, none of you go to those games with me, um, as I can sometimes get out of hand, uh, in my excitement. Uh, but, uh, last Saturday, uh, we, uh, we did raise the green and white above the rest, and it truly was all Ohio's day. That's all I have, Mr. President, thank you.
Auditor, Alexander.
Thank you, Mr. President, uh, I too want to wish Sergeant Rice Godspeed in his recovery, rehabilitation, and return to, to, to.
Auditor, question.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to echo what, uh, the auditor said.
Let's start with the other shared tonight, uh, we'll start with Mr. Henry tonight, because he had the most to say, so. Yeah, I'm not normally that, talking, but you told me to do that. But I do, uh, thank you, Mr. Rice, and, uh, our, not Mr. Rice, but I appreciate you. You know, all of our young men and women, it's a, I mean, we all recognize you. That's about all. Well, I've got one in the army, too. Mr. Crabb.
Welcome everyone tonight. I squish the Cody, my son's obviously at school with, uh, him, and they're, wow, he's a good athlete, great American.
Thank you, Mr. President, first I want to correct an oversight, I forgot to ask Bob if he had anything to add to my report when I did Parks Recreation and Davis Shea, so Bob, do you have anything to add?
It's too late now.
Don't get mad, it's getting, it's getting, oh, my, never mind. I also wanted to give my thanks to Cody Rice and his family, and if it goes out to you, I don't know Cody personally, but my daughter graduated in two thousand five, and it's hard to read in the paper and see something that hits that close to home, because we think all of our kids are untouchable, and it's certainly not the truth, but, but we really appreciate my guest for our conference. That's it, thank you, Mr. President.
Uh, Mr. Johnson.
Mr. President, I'd like to welcome everyone here this evening. This has been me and, uh, Sergeant Rice, Godspeed, I squish his, and, uh, by chance, if he's coming home, let us, uh, so that we can, uh, maybe put the, put the works together, and we know for a couple others here in the City of Pete, it must be a great, great thing for us, participating.
Thank you very much. Then you have anything? Uh, John Geller. Give the other. Oh, Geller, now your chance, nothing. Senator Roth.
Okay.
Chief Hattler. Uh, just one football thing, this Friday night is the, uh, uh, home football game, but it's also the fiftieth reunion, their weekend. So if you're a graduate of East High School, and you want to come back to the high school, uh, Friday night, come down there and, uh, uh, meet returnees or alumni from, from first class to, to rest, so, so, I don't know how many, Jeff, do you have any idea how many there are, just paying, or do they come back? Another dinner on Saturday, I think I posted maybe two hundred.
Yeah, but as far as the actual numbers are right in their head.
This is, uh, uh, new business? Reading visits?
Not the reading, so.
Miss Lane is?
During. Blue.
Second, all in favor say aye?
Aye.